Best podcast ever is sponsored by the Gertzberg Law Firm, a full-service business law firm in Cleveland and Chagrin Falls that's changing the way businesses retain their attorneys. Go to gertzberglaw.com to learn more. While you're there, check out Cover My Six, a complete legal audit of the six areas that most often create or prevent business lawsuits and government investigations. Go to covermysix.com to learn how we keep you safe. Enjoy the show.
Ladies and gentlemen, you're about to listen to the best podcast ever recorded.
You're gonna be doing something. You're not gonna be sitting home doing nothing, so you may as well be doing something that you're passionate about. Alex!
Hi Molly Gebler. It's been ages.
Did you miss me?
So much.
I've been gone a little bit.
You have been. You've been grandmothering a lot.
I have been. We had a little bit of a scare when we were here. You were about to interview one of our guests and I got lots of texts from my daughter. And it's so funny, when you become a grandma, you just think you're, or when your kids grow up, you think you're done with that medical fear, you know, that you have when your little one gets sick or, you know, I don't know what to do or...
You were not done.
No, 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 no. We, um, so...
Let's talk about it.
Yeah, so they got the flu.
And they're now like a month old?
Two months.
Two months old.
Two months. They got the flu. And then that was on, on a Wednesday. And then on Thursday Samantha called me in tears and she said, "Check your texts. I sent you a picture of John." And she said, "His head is literally caving in as we speak."
What the hell does that mean?
So she shows me this picture and just the top of his head was literally concaved in. So of course, I'm trying to be mature and not freak her out. I'm freaking out, but I'm...
But wait, wait. Don't little kids have that soft spot up there? Cause they're, it's not fused together yet?
Absolutely. They absolutely do. This was after the podcast. I'm not gonna gross everybody out on the podcast. I will show, I will gross Alex out personally after the podcast. But, so I yelled to Jessica and I'm like, "Come here." Not yelled, I like whispered to her and I said, "Google this."
Yeah.
So it's a sign of dehydration. So Sam called the doctor and the doctor said, "Just take, take him to the ER." So if, and I know you don't believe in God and this is, these are the reasons that you should, that this was complete intervention by him because Samantha says, "Can you come and watch Mary while I take John to the hospital?" And I said, "You know what, Sam? I just, why don't we just all go there? You know, like Mary was sick as well. She was coughing. I'm like, let's just all go there and whatever." Well, thank God, because by the time we got to the hospital, John's head was fine. We're still investigating that a little further. Sometimes it's just the reconstruction. They're kind of trying to reform his head a little bit. With some different pillows, so he doesn't have to wear a helmet. So we had just started a new pillow. So they were thinking, maybe things shifted, whatever. So as we're in the ER with both the babies, Mary starts coughing. And they're like, "You know what? We, we don't like the way that sounds." And so they check her breathing. Babies are supposed to breathe 50 times in a minute. So you're supposed to see a belly go 30 times when they're sleeping. And don't quote me on this, parents out there, if you're listening. Um, so they're like, "She is struggling," like, and it's funny because we had heard this like from Mary, but we just thought it was a sore throat or she was clearing her throat or whatever. Well, it was her struggling to breathe. So they took the, the timing, whatever. And so, you know, he's, she's really, she's really, she's not having a hard time breathing. She's just working hard to breathe. Yes. So they're like, "We need to admit her. She needs to get on oxygen and we need to..." I mean, but we weren't not gonna, I was gonna stay home with Mary and, and Sam was gonna take John. And so John ended up going home. I spent two days over at their house watching him and then, um, Mary stayed and, um, yeah, so that was that.
All flu-related?
All, yeah, they both had a cold, probably just a cold because neither had fevers. Um, but Mary was vomiting a lot.
Wow.
So yeah, just...
But they're fine now.
They're good. So Saturday, I was supposed to go to DC this weekend. And, um, so Friday night, or Friday during the day we were supposed to leave, Mary was just coming home. I said to John, "You know what? Let's just drive out." We were going to see Tommy, The Who's Tommy in a Kennedy, at the Kennedy Center, cause my friend's son, Casey Cot, was the lead in it. Well, he was Tommy. And, um, so I said to, to John, "Let's just drive out Saturday morning. We'll get there a couple hours before the show. Um, I just wanted Sam to settle back home, get a couple hours of sleep, whatever." So I called our hotel in DC. I said, "Listen, we, we already paid for it." We're like, "I'm not coming in Friday." I was actually giving them a little courtesy, saying, "Basically, you can take our room tonight, but we'll be, we'll be there tomorrow." So we roll in, we're about two hours before the show. Um, they're like, "Uh, you know what? We, we marked you as no show yesterday." And I was like, "Nope, nope." Here, I'm grabbing my phone. At 11:33 AM, I called you guys to tell you, you know, we weren't, we wouldn't be on Friday, but we'd be on Saturday. And I'm like, "Well..." We gave the room away. I'm like, "I, I couldn't care less. You're gonna find us a room," or whatever. So finally, after 45 minutes of waiting and figuring, uh, we get to our room. It's, we're about an hour and a half now away from, somewhere in that area away from the show. And DC traffic, you don't wanna, you know, we wanted to be there, whatever. So somehow by the grace of God, I look at my ticket and I noticed that it was for the 2 PM show. Sold out. Saturday night was sold out. So I called the Kennedy Center and kudos to the Kennedy Center. Um, we'll have to tag them in our post here, cause they were, there's nothing they could do. It was sold out. They couldn't get me in there. But they ended up calling me back and offering me a show that was at nine o'clock, just a completely different show in one of their other theaters, which I thought was very, very nice. And I explained to them that, you know, we were there to support the lead. We had just driven in from Ohio. So I ended up calling, um, my friend whose son is in it and said, "Listen, I, I don't know what to do, but..." And so she, of course, amazingly handled it. And he was flipping unbelievable. He was so good. Now, he's on TV. He's not on Broadway. His brother's on Broadway. But he, this is, was his first kind of, um, he, he was in the plays at Chagrin, but this was his first.
Hang on. So, so you saw Tommy?
So I saw Tommy. It was a limited run for a week. No, they, they got it. The, the mom, you know, they have special tickets for...
They did get you tickets for that night.
The mom did. Yeah. Cause there's like a concierge person who deals with the families of the actors.
Gotcha.
So we had to go down that route. But, but shout out to the Kennedy Center, cause, you know, they, that was very nice of them to offer us. So Alex, I know that you want to tell me everything, but I do have something. It's not for you, but I do want to show you something.
What do you want to show me?
I want to show you what's in this envelope.
Molly has...
I have a brown envelope.
...handed me a nondescript unidentified
Yes.
Uh, brown envelope with what appears to be a book called Blossom, written by Molly Gebler, illustrated by Lily Winans.
Of course, you can't have it, cause you have to buy your own, but...
What? What are you talking about?
Buy your own. And don't break the seal, cause they just have to wait a whole 24 hours for them to seal from the binder. We just picked them up from the binder.
Molly, I am so proud of you. This is amazing. Really nice illustrations, Lily.
Isn't it amazing?
Can we, uh, can we read an excerpt?
Sure, sure. But don't crack the bind though, or it'll be ruined.
All right. Here is an excerpt from Blossom by Molly Gebler.
Should I read it though?
Yeah, you should read it. Molly, this is going to be, by the way, a historic moment, ladies and gentlemen, because this is the first book Molly has read since high school.
Yes, yes, yes. I'm only reading a page. I'm reading the whole book. Don't get everybody excited. "On a beautiful day in May, Blossom decided to take an adventure in the sky. She was so excited to spend the day sailing through the clouds. She got up bright and early and set off for her day."
I can't wait to hear what happens next.
Yes. "You can go to a piece of Molly's mind and purchase your own book for $1,295 plus tax."
That is so cool, Molly. You're, you're a published author. You are now, let's, let's just, let's rattle them off. You are an award-winning documentarian. You are the
Podcast host.
Co-host of an incredible and fast-growing podcast.
Yes.
You are...
I was on the New Yorker's podcast. Yes.
Wait a second.
It was on NPR yesterday.
About a lantern?
Yes.
Dude, I totally heard you on the radio the other day. I wanted to tell you that. We were driving.
It just released two days ago or something, three days ago.
Tiffany and I were driving downtown and we always listen to NPR in the car. And I was like, "Holy crap, that's Molly talking about the lantern."
So that's with the New Yorker. They had done an article about the lantern and, and then they asked if I'd be on their podcast. And yeah, oh, that's bizarre. Can you tell me that? Cause I gotta cover it up. Cause this does not get, it'll be out by the time all you listeners, but right now, cause we tape a couple of days before we release, right now, and I can't let anybody see. Alex Privy.
That is really cool, Molly. I'm very, I'm incredibly proud of you.
So yeah, so yeah, that's where I was today.
Congratulations, Molly. You must be so proud.
You know what? I am. I am.
Good. I'm proud of you too.
And I want to do a, a just quick little, um, a little shout out to my mother and tell her that I love her. Cause today is four years, or yes, today and tomorrow. It's a long story, but yes, today or tomorrow.
Okay.
Four years, um, since she left us, since my life changed. So shout out to her. So yeah, so, um, are you good? I mean, it's been like forever.
Um, I had an unsettling weekend. Um, on Sunday, we went to the Botanical Garden. You've been there recently?
I have not.
This is the time to go, like spring. Everything's blooming over there. Beautiful. Tulips everywhere.
We missed the cherry blossoms at DC, like by a week.
Oh, did you really?
Yes.
Yeah, don't worry about it. Go to the Botanical Garden, say that.
I'm going to.
And we went to the art museum. So it was, it was, it was a fun weekend. Um, it was...
And do you take Maya to all those things when you go? Oh, that's awesome.
Yeah, when I have...
She's gonna be so cultured.
Um, yeah, she, um, I'd, I'd like to think so. I hope so. She always, we always have to be wary of like the three to four o'clock tantrum.
Yes. We call that, that was, the twins have a witching hour as well. Yes.
Yeah, you don't want to be, you don't want to be anyplace. Yeah. And like when you're in an art museum and they thrive on like quiet introspection. It's just, and I was, and it's funny because we have this dream that we talk about of going to Japan and the art museum has, um, an ancient Japanese art exhibit called Shinto. And I was so looking forward to it and so was Tiffany. And we, and we got Maya all excited, cause she wants to go to Japan too. And, uh, we went to Botanical Garden first and then to the art museum. We hit the art museum three o'clock.
Like, we won't be going to Japan.
Man, like we weren't there for five minutes before she was like, "I want to go home. Take me home." Right? She's tired. Her little legs are all tired.
So give me prices of, um, the Botanical Garden and, um, the art museum out of curiosity. You go to the art museum a lot.
Yeah, well, most of it is free to the public. Um, the special exhibits like Shinto are, um, 10 to 15 bucks a person.
Gotcha. What about the...
Similar, 10 to 15 bucks. That's not free. That is 10 to 15 bucks a person.
Okay. Just out of curiosity.
Yeah. Uh, I, I loved both. I love that whole area. We would've gone to the History Museum too, if we, if she didn't have a meltdown. So anyhow, let's talk about our good friend Catherine Garvey.
Yes. We had a lovely time with Catherine in Columbus during the, um, we went to, um...
It was the Ohio School Boards Association.
Yes, yes.
Uh, and she is a, the president of the Chagrin Falls exempt, what is it? Exempted Village?
Exempted Village.
Village School District.
Yes, she's very fancy.
She's the school board president since January of this year. Vice president last year. She also has this Safe Routes Chagrin organization that she founded.
Yes. Yes. I remember when that started. And I believe, we may have missed it, um, but I believe that there is an official day, um, appreciating the...
The crossing guards?
Crossing guards.
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure. I think, uh, by the time this airs, but you know what? You can thank your crossing guard anytime. Cause I, I mean, I pass them and they're in the snow, in the rain, in the hot sun. So they, and they're keeping our children safe. So they should be thanked anytime.
Yeah. Well, and, and it's interesting because, you know, we're always talking about people impacting other people. And she, you, you wonder how many more crossing guards are on the streets around Chagrin Falls schools because she raised her hand.
All of them.
Right. Well, yeah, yeah. And it's funny too, because, um, she, uh, I jaywalked one day.
Uh-oh.
Right? And, uh...
That doesn't happen here in Chagrin, ever.
Yeah. Well, and, and she, she gave me a very polite stink eye, you know, like not, but then I talked to her about it and she's like, "Yeah, I can't do that. I'm not allowed to jaywalk because I'm, I'm head of this."
Oh, I'm very conscious about myself, for sure. Yes. I don't want to be on the, the cover of the local paper or the Village Block Club.
Yeah. Well, plus you could be, if they give you a ticket, I wonder, is that one of the, is that the kind of thing that they put into like the newspaper for like, no, that's just when someone calls the place?
I will tell you, back in the day, I've lived here since I was 14, 15, 14. Um, back in the day, in the eight, late eighties, jaywa, that you'd get busted for jaywalking constantly. They were ticketing for jaywalking. Yeah.
You know, I, all right, let's talk about that some more, cause I've got some thoughts about jaywalking, uh, that we can broach with, uh, our good friend Catherine Garvey. I'm gonna bring her in. We're live. Hi Catherine Garvey.
Hello, Alex Gertzberg and Molly Gebler.
How's it going?
Good.
Welcome. Welcome to the best podcast ever.
So excited.
Of all time.
We're excited to have you. That's right.
Yeah. Um, are you a listener?
No, they asked that.
Don't ask, because they always say no.
No, I actually...
No, she just said.
I, I, yeah, I've been doing my homework. I listened before. I listened to Jim Looney and Carl Mears. Um, and I just listened to Ja, Barry Jacobson. Um, I listened to Bob Hunt and...
Oh, yes. That was a good one.
So yeah, I've been, I just wanted to kind of get a sense. But I, I was hoping to get the, um, the ending questions. I had a...
Oh, yeah. No, no, it doesn't work that way.
Rapid fire?
The, um, lightning round questions. Yeah, it doesn't work that way, Catherine. But she did do her homework, so she should at least have an idea.
And now I'm, I'm, I'm a YouTube follower. It'll show up in my feed now that you guys have a new video, you know, and I think what you're doing is amazing.
Oh, thank you.
Everybody has a story to tell.
Yeah.
And there's something, I'm a real big believer in learning from other people. You know, one of the things I always do is, is look to other people who've come before me or who have done something that I'm trying to accomplish and, and what, what worked for you, what didn't work for you, and kind of bring them in. And I think that's kind of what you're doing here. You're exposing your listeners to other people that have done a variety of different types of things in their lives.
We're doing it for our own selfish purposes.
Yeah. And we learn a lot about you guys and you guys are wonderful to listen to.
Oh, yeah. We're a hoot.
Some really good pep talk.
I know. I love her.
So I know your book is coming out. It's so exciting.
Catherine, yes. My, uh, Wednesday.
And I just went to your page and I'm a follower now on your page. Molly's Mind.
Molly's next project, or Piece of Molly's Mind.
Piece of Molly's Mind and on Facebook. I went on Facebook too.
Very exciting.
I might be your second follower.
I love it. I love, hey, I'll take them all. I'll take them all. Yes.
You're, um, you're kind of the Energizer Bunny.
You know what? And I say this often, my mom passed away at 73, my dad at 34.
Oh, wow.
Um, so I have a lot of living to do for them.
I think it's who you are.
It's not guaranteed.
Yeah. Carpe diem.
It's good that you point that out though, Catherine, because I sometimes, cause I see you every week, you know, I do take that for granted. Um, you've got a lot of plates spinning all the time.
They're spinning, all right.
Usually, usually, like most of us have a project, right? But you've usually got like three, four projects going on at once.
Keeps me out of trouble.
Yeah. Speaking of multiple projects, Catherine, you are a walking, talking example of plates spinning, right? Okay, let's, can we start with, uh, with jaywalking real quick? All right.
Sure.
So here, so...
Are you a jaywalker?
Alex said you gave him the stink eye.
We've talked about this, Catherine.
Gentle stink eye.
Yeah. Um, well, here's the thing, because on Village Block Club, people were really raging about how, about some issue with like, there was a question of whether to...
Shocking.
Yeah. Whether, whether there should be a crosswalk in, in, at one intersection. I think that was what sparked off this like avalanche of...
Many, many things that sparked this avalanche.
So, but then somebody, somebody said something that I thought was a kind of insightful, right? And I wanted to get your opinion about this. They said something like, downtown Chagrin Falls has always been a walking town. And, and that, that is why the drivers should watch out for people crossing the street other than in crosswalks. And it got me to thinking, and I, I don't, I'm not taking a position here. I don't agree or disagree with any of it. But it reminded me of Oxford, Ohio, right? Miami of Ohio, where I went to college. And also OU, Athens, Ohio is the same way. And maybe this is a college town thing and, and that's what makes this different than, than Chagrin Falls. But there are definitely towns where the street, like the, 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 the High Street, the Main Street, the, you know, whatever, is expected to be a very pedestrian kind of a place, including on the street itself. Do you guys think that that's crazy?
No. In fact, if you, you, and I know you've done some traveling. If you go to Europe, you know, someone, there may not even be a crosswalk, but, but a pedestrian puts their foot off of the curb and the cars stop
Right.
and yield. There's a cultural difference there. A little bit of what you said, I think, could be attributed to the bubble mentality. We forget that we're not the only ones who travel through Chagrin Falls. You know, we are a tourist destination. There are a lot of people here that don't live here. Maybe this is their first time here. Um, it would be great if culturally in the United States, we just had drivers who are more aware and, and watching for pedestrians and being respectful of pedestrians. I just think for some reason, that's kind of gotten lost in our, in our growth of our country. Um, but I'll preempt you a little bit, because if you're gonna ask me about an embarrassing moment, I was thinking about this.
Coming later, Catherine.
Well, I'm gonna answer it now, because it ties into this. Um, this all started for me back when my daughter was 10 and she was a fourth grader at the intermediate school. And as you may know, I live very close to the intermediate school, just across the street. And she really wanted to just go across the street and go to school. And I said, "You really need to go up to that light and use the crosswalk and go down." Well, you can imagine the battle that then ensued. "All my friends are crossing and, you know, you're not a lemming, you know, you don't need to do this. This is the best way. This is where cars are gonna see you." She's a tiny little thing. Anyway, she's barely five foot one as an adult. So anyway, I fought that battle with her and that's part of how Safe Routes came to be. But one day, um, after we had made some progress and we actually had crossing guards in place and I had been, um, a guard and really talking with students and parents about how can we change behavior and that it really is better for these kids who are pretty young to be at the crosswalk. Well, one day as an adult, on a Sunday, I jaywalked across Washington Street to go to Hynans, or what was Giant Eagle then? And wouldn't you know, in the car, coming down the street, were two girls that were ready to point out, "There's Mrs. Garvey, not following the rules." And I was appalled with myself. And, I mean, they say walk the walk, talk the talk. I mean, literally now, I will not jaywalk. It can be, we were just coming back from back of the wreck this weekend and there were no cars around and my husband is like, "Really?" Said, "Yes, really?" Because, and this is where I think sometimes adults forget. Like, yes, we probably have the wherewithal to judge it's a safe time to cross, but we forget that we're being watched by kids. And when I see like the dad with his four-year-old on his shoulders, crossing to Starbucks, and I think, "Oh my gosh." And, and then you're gonna turn around and tell that child at Safety Town that they should wait at the crosswalk and look right, left, right? I, I, that's where I think there's a disconnect. And so I think we adults need to model the behavior that we expect from kids and understand that kids, they're smaller. They don't perceive speed of cars as well as we do. They don't perceive distances as well as we do. So it literally is less safe for them to make that judgment about when to cross.
And it's just, it's the rule. Uh, that doesn't mean that drivers should only concern themselves by crosswalks either. I mean, as a driver, you should always be, you know, looking around and making sure that, you know, so, I mean, it doesn't give the, the driver a, a pass to just pay attention to the road when it comes to a crosswalk, obviously. But, you know, the, we've been through it with someone being killed. So, you know, just walk through the crosswalk. Why do you want to put that on somebody else?
So Catherine, what was the, um, do you remember the day that you kind of had the light bulb go off, that this was something you needed to champion and something that, that was important to you? And that you needed to raise your hand and, and take the lead on this?
Well, and it wasn't just about jaywalking. So, you mean, the whole, the whole issue of, so my daughter, starting school, you start to have discussions, starting in fourth grade about, well, how are you gonna get to school? Well, obviously, you know, it's less than five minutes for you to get there. So her pushing on me, you know, "Why can't I just cross here? Everybody's doing it." You know, prompting me to ask, "Why can't they, why don't we have a crosswalk here?" Like, right? Right at Washington Street.
Like right where the entrance of the intermediate school is, is where you're kind of thinking they should have had a...
There's a sidewalk that comes right down to Washington Street. And the school is on Philamethian. And then there's a sidewalk that comes down to Washington. And the main entrance to the building faces Washington. It's just set back behind some houses. So I live right across the street from that, not directly across, but kind of catty corner. And at that time, there were probably about 30 to 40 students who would come from various parts of town, up Washington, or even from behind me in May Court, and would cut through my yard and cross right there. And so it was kind of the path. And, and it's funny, because I think at Cleveland State, when they built Cleveland State, they didn't install sidewalks until the students were there. And then they went and built sidewalks where the mud was, where the kids walked, because you wanna, you don't want to try to redirect the stream. You want to build your sidewalks where the natural flow is. So I went to the principal at that time and said, "Can we put a crosswalk here?" And he said, "You know, about every couple of years, some parent comes in and asks me that and nothing ever seems to happen." And I said, "I'm Catherine Garvey." And we're gonna figure this out. So I did what I do. I started talking to people and collecting some information and talked to him, talked to Chief Brochus. Learned a lot about mid-block crossings, which are actually, um, unsignaled crossings are the most dangerous place for a student to cross or for a child to cross, anybody to cross, I think. So they had evaluated the potential for a crosswalk there and had ruled it out for safety reasons, that they felt it would actually be more dangerous than to add one. I learned that there had been crossing guards in the past. I learned that there had been a safety patrol, which was students involved. And some of these you may have been involved with and, or your kids may have been involved with. So I wanted to find out, well, what happened to those? Why did they, why weren't they here anymore? You know, what really had changed? And so in advocating for my child to say, you know, "She'd like to just cross here," and there's all these other kids who want to do that, I learned that could be less safe for them than what they were doing. And there was a better alternative, which is to give, um, more education about the best ways to get to school and to, to use the crosswalks. And then that reinforcement of having an adult crossing guard there, because you still had some parents, when you have a nine and 10-year-old, um, still not quite sure. You know, you're kind of letting out that leash just a little bit by a little bit. And you want them to develop that independence and, um, the autonomy and, you know, self-confidence. But you want to do it in a controlled manner, where you're kind of giving that as the child is earning it. And we had, um, early on in, in the program, and I'll kind of back up a little bit to fill in some blanks here, but we did a survey about why do, why do kids walk? Why do they not walk? Why do they bike? Why do they not bike? What, what are, what's on parents' minds? What, what's concerning them? Or what things could we do better to improve walkability? And the number one suggestion was to put crossing guards in place. So it's, it's one of the most impactful things that we've done.
But you didn't just put crossing guards in. You created this whole Safe Route to School, which does fundraising and Walk to School Day and you're...
Bike to School Day's coming up.
What is it?
Bike to School Day, May 15th.
Then you're, uh, 4th of July, you do the bike parade. What made you, because I'm assuming that the ones that didn't last were because they didn't have somebody, a champion, that would continue that and make it strong enough. Cause you are kind of backed away a little bit.
I am.
What made you say, "That's just not enough and I want to make this something more?"
So I think it was two things. First off, because there's strength in numbers, I assembled friends and neighbors who also had kids... Who also had kids going to the intermediate school and said, bef- right at the beginning of this whole thing. Do you let your kids cross here? You know, am I the only one? Is she, is she right? Is my daughter right? You're the only crazy mom who won't let me cross in the middle of the street. Um, what other things are worrisome to you? And, and all these things started bubbling up that weren't on my list. But I realized they were on other people's list of, you know, stranger danger. And, you know, a variety of different things that they were concerned about. And so I realized it was bigger than just my little concern. And then secondly, I probably would have been happy with just putting in that crosswalk. But then when I heard you can't have the crosswalk. Because that actually might not be a good idea. It became so much more, and not problematic, but it became bigger. Then you have to change behavior. Changing behavior takes a multifaceted approach. And so you needed education. We wanted to make it fun and not too restrictive.
You needed to get those kids that were crossing over to the appropriate crosswalk.
Without, you know, having a police officer standing there.
Right.
Giving them tickets or something crazy. So, um, and then the second element was. Um, we, we thought is this little group that this grassroots, you know, group that had formed in two thousand and seven. Um, we thought, well, if we get the crossing guards, that'll be really good. So, um. And especially if, you know, we could have them in all the different places. Maybe they'll be paid. They'll have that, you know, we didn't want it to be like playground volunteers where. Might be hit or miss whether somebody made their shift. Cause it's pretty important that. You're, you're there, right? And we can rely on you. So, we, um, we wanted to propose. To the school board and to the village, a cost sharing arrangement to pay for the crossing guards. And it was gonna be fifteen thousand a year. Very nominal. But because of that, we prepared a full, and this is kind of. A little bit, I was, as I reflected on how this all has happened. Not just identifying a problem, not even just helping craft a solution, but trying to create a solution. That's implementable and sustainable. And, and I think that's speaks a lot to what I've tried to do with different projects I've gotten involved with. And so we wanted to bring to the school board a full report so they could totally understand the proposal. What other communities do it, what it costs, how to structure it, et cetera. So the school board and not, now that I'm on the school board, I really understand the perspective. Kind of said, we're not totally sure this is our responsibility. Because a lot of the walking is not on school property. So it needs to be this kind of partnership. Um, so, but we, we're not saying no, we just think there's more work to be done here. And boy, it would be really great if you could find some grant funding to help supplement. So that spurred me to go on the internet and start looking for grants for this type of thing.
Was this a background of yours? Grant writing and, and grants and stuff like that? Okay.
No, no.
Learning as you.
I was learning as I went. But we were really fortunate. In two thousand and five, the government, it, with that transportation bill had passed the Safe Routes to School. Funding. And so nationally, there were millions of dollars going out to the states. And it was kind of an environmental concern. It was a health and wellness concern and a transportation concern to reduce cars. Um, on that route to and from school because, you know, from the nineteen seventies to today, there was a marked decrease in the number of. Kids who would walk or bike to school. So trying to reverse that, they put all this money in place that went to the state departments of transportation. To then be doled out to communities. And that was in oh five and here we are in oh seven, oh eight. So we were right on the upswing of this in.
Perfect timing.
So I didn't really create Safe Routes to School. It was created by James Oberstar and came through the transportation bill. But was so fortunate to see that we were just starting that in Ohio. We were one of the first communities to get funding. And then, this is kind of where, it wasn't really my brainchild, but to get access to the funding, they had set up. What they call the five E's and a process that we needed to follow, which I'm so thankful for. Because one part of the process was you had to have a cross-functional team that included your police department. Your engineer, engineers in the community, your schools, parents, health department, a whole variety. So. I took my little parent team and said, we gotta get more people on this team. So I went to Steve Patton. And I'll never forget, he said, thank you for asking me. I'd love to do it.
And he had kids at that point. They probably weren't walking, but.
They were, well, they could have been. He's on South, he's on South Main. And they were, um, they're a little bit younger than.
Okay, Pat, yes.
Yeah, the Pattens. Um, but what I loved when he said, thank you for asking me to do this. I'd love to do it. I mean, how often? Do you ask somebody to do something and that's the response? And then of course Chief Brochus, and at that point, um, Amber Dasek was assigned to the group. Um, and of course, working with. The school administration, some of the principals have changed, but have been very supportive. Um, that was a very, really powerful formula. And then the second thing was, um, and this is really powerful as well, to do basically a strategic planning type of an analysis. Like what are, what is working in your community and what isn't working in your community? And that included parents, students, we surveyed students. Um, and then having engineers come out and look at some of our traffic patterns, some of our roads where we don't have sidewalks, where we needed sidewalks. And that was a lengthy process. It was over a year to do this basic, um, called a school travel plan. But once we had that in place, we had prioritized goals of what we wanted to do in our community. We knew what it would cost us and then we were able to take those and apply for grant funding to help.
Is it still currently, are the, the, um, folks paid still and is it all through grant money?
So it ended up the guards were never paid. Part of the grant restriction is to pay any type of a salary.
Oh.
And part of the reason is they want to provide seed money to get these projects up and running. And allow you to kind of in a safe way test some things to see what works in your community. But at the end of the day, they really want you to become self-sustaining. So we are in that self-sustaining mode. We could still apply for grants, but to be honest, we've, we brought in over a million dollars. In grant money. And I kind of feel like we're ready to be in a self-sustaining mode where we look for strategic partnerships. And things like that to fund what we do.
Are you able to see how many, um, uh, cars are lost now in driving the kids to school and things like that?
We do. And so part of the, when you're in your grant phase, um, annually, you have to do counts. So we have let that lapse in the last couple of years, but I do remember in twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, maybe. Um, we did a walker count and there's around five hundred students at the intermediate school. Two hundred and fifty walked at least once during the week that we did our count.
Wow.
So, obviously that's about half of the population. But what that also tells you, and, and this is like another element of it that I think is so important. About bringing our whole school community together. And it's not just Chagrin Falls. It's Bentleyville and Matt Moreland Hills and South Russell, that our students. Part of what makes Chagrin unique is that when you're going to school at the intermediate school, a lot of those kids walk into town after school. And so a big piece of our program became walk to school, walk to town. Because we wanted to respect that piece of it and.
Sounds like a fun chamber partnership on that one, doesn't it?
Well, and, and seriously, so we wanted them to be good customers. And we did assemblies where we talked about, you know, you're not on your cell phone in line at the popcorn shop. And you hold the door for the next person in line and things like that. So we're saying, enjoy what our community has to offer. The libraries and the parks and the shops and, and be a good customer.
Right.
And, you know, be responsible. And that's all part of it.
Did I hear you say that you obtained like a million dollars in funding?
Yeah.
So, wh- where's it all going? So it's not for sa- none of it's for salaries?
No. So, um, a lo- a large majority of it went to, um, infrastructure changes. So, we looked at what the village had prioritized for sidewalks. And they had a list, Ben Heims was so grateful for this program because he'd had a list that they had developed like fifteen or twenty years prior. Where they had assessed the most dangerous roads for walking, where they really needed to install sidewalks. And there was just no money to install sidewalks. So we looked at that list and we looked at where our students live. We actually map out the addresses and this is how we determine the crossing guard corners as well. Although it's kind of obvious where they need to be. But it does help us to look at where are they coming from? Who's within a mile radius? That's kind of a natural walking distance for students. And so we could map out how many students live in these areas where they would need to traverse these roads that don't have sidewalks. And so we were able to apply for grant funding for sidewalks. The biggest chunk is the Mill Street. Sidewalk and boardwalk that our program paid for.
So when you go back down Chase Bag.
Past the library.
Bridge now, that was all their funding.
What's, uh, uh, among the things that are fascinating about this story to me is how we're always. Talking about how there are things that we want from local government and the response usually is, well, there's only so many resources that we've got. Right? And, and everyone's got needs. And here is a totally, um, grassroots. Totally volunteer organization that you, that one person Catherine puts together. And then you got some other concerned parents together and through sheer force of will, right? Um, presumably, everyone has other things that, to do. So you, you guys had to have. Put all that time and effort into meeting, talking, researching, applying for stuff, right? And hundreds, probably thousands of hours later, you've got a real safety difference. I mean. So, so A, I commend you for that because that's highly unusual, highly unusual.
I don't know, I've listened to your podcast. I think there's a few people.
You could have said no when the board, when the school board said, you know what? We don't think it's our responsibility. You said, oh, no.
But the second piece of that though, is that you probably saved some lives. If not saved lives, prevented.
Alex, every day that I'm a crossing guard, I save a life. And, and I mean. It's just, it's people not, they're being, they're distracted, there, there's more distractions out there.
Start to the day that a, a crosswalk. Um, it's person, volunteer stepped on their points.
Yeah.
How long of a process was that?
I feel like. We spent a year doing the strategic plan, the school travel plan, which it was a full-time job for me. And I, I remember thinking, if the payoff is in the millions, this is so worth it. I will do this. You know, I will dedicate my time. I was the one who kind of put everything together and, and, you know, had all the various moving parts pulled together. Yeah. So I think the vol- I'm trying to think of, and Dick Shanklin was one of the first, so we should go ask Dick. Dick and I were both. Um, shared the same corner at Key Bank. Um, I think it was about a year. He's still out there and he loves it. And so there's this, there's another theme of connectivity there. You know, the, the crossing guards are grandparents and parents and community members and. It's interesting because it's one of those things that people are reticent to do because of the commitment. And, oh, I don't know if, you know, what if I have a doctor's appointment or what if I decide to go on vacation? Once we explain to them, there's substitutes, we have a really big list, we're gonna cover you, this is not gonna be a burden. It's so doable. And then they do it. They inevitably thank me. Thank you for asking me to do this. It is the most meaningful part of my day. I love it. And you have Dick, whose wife died a few years ago. And I remember I got a call in the middle of the night from. His daughter and I said, I'll, absolutely, I'm covering his shifts as long as he needs. I'll be there in the morning. And. The next afternoon, Dick said, no, I'm gonna be there. I need to be there. Those are my kids. I love those kids. And there's several who have lost a spouse or, um, just, it's their connection to our community and it's their connection to the youth in our community.
So are you handling all the staff and?
So we have a crossing guard manager.
Okay.
Thank goodness. Yes, Sandy Trop.
Oh, yeah.
Shout out to Sandy. And we are always looking for volunteers. I'll put a little plug in, saferrouteschagrin.com. Or our Facebook page, which is Fa- Safe Routes Chagrin. You can ask for information about becoming a volunteer crossing guard.
Okay.
And, but your sense is that it takes like days? I mean, is it days? Is it weeks?
You can do one shift a week, which would be a thirty minute commitment.
Oh, but that's a good thing to know for people.
Your question Molly was like from the day that you apply.
Oh, she said a year.
Oh, was it like a year?
Yeah, I think.
To become a crossing guard?
Oh, no, 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 no.
My question was to start the whole program. And the minute she said, I wanna do this too. Yeah.
About a year, got it.
But what about the training for crossing guards?
Very simple, very straightforward. And the police department helps us with that. We have a PowerPoint presentation and really the best thing is. Is getting out there. So if you can shadow a guard for a couple of shifts, you really get a sense of the whole.
And it's two times a day? Or are there people that just do mornings or?
Yeah, so we, we have ten shifts a week for each quarter. We have four corners right now. One, two, three, no, five, uh, six corners.
Where are they out of curiosity?
So, um, right now the High School Drive.
Okay, yes.
And, um, Karen is our guard there who, um, does every morning and every afternoon. And she, she gave me a little heads up the other day that she's now taken to wearing thematic hats. So. She had Easter bunny ears on.
I love that.
Yes, she's really, really enjoying it. Um, and then at Ridgewood, we have a guard. So we're catching all the kids that are heading to Bell. And then down at Philamethian, we have a guard because a lot of the kids come down, they wanna cross toward town and then go to Hynans or CBS. Um, we have a guard at BP Corner and we have a guard at the First Federal Corner. So when the school goes back to the Philamethian location, our guards are usually at Bell and Philamethian. Philamethian and Washington, at the Key Bank Corner. And then, um, down at, um, the other side of the triangle at, at Franklin.
And, and were there no crossing guards around here before two thousand and eight?
No.
Wow.
No, I, I've lived here since nineteen ninety-two and there were no guards.
That's insane.
Around. But there is somebody, in fact, I, this is good to put on your podcast. There's some well-known guard. That a lot of the people in Chagrin who went, oh, it was Mr. So-and-so and he was there every day. And I don't know who he was or what happened. But I would love to find out. And Ms. Mazantine was the one who used to run Safety Patrol. And I learned a little bit about why having students manage that was maybe not a good direction.
I could only imagine.
Imagine to go, so.
Yeah. Can't you get off early? Sure, I'll walk, I'll walk the rest of the way with you.
So, um, so then you were thinking, you know, um, this, uh, this Safe Routes thing just isn't enough. Um, taking up enough of my time. I think I'm gonna run for school board. Uh, so you've been doing that for a couple of years.
Four, this is my fourth year.
It's been four years?
It has. It has. So.
That's gotta be like a full-time, I mean, I know you meet formally only what, once.
Twice a month.
Twice a month, but preparing for all of that.
Right. And, and the board president this year, so it's a little extra work there.
And you're on a, uh, is it the, you're on, on, on committees within it, right?
Right, we have a number of committees. It is, it's a big job, so.
Yeah, what's your deal Catherine? Can we all just calm down for a second?
We're kindred spirits Molly.
That's right, that's right.
I'm thankful that there are people like us in our community.
I'm very thankful. Well, here, I, I, let me, let me just say this. Um, uh. As a parent of three who doesn't do a fraction of certainly what you do Catherine, I'm sure you too Molly. Um, I'm very grateful that there's people like you around.
So you don't have to do anything?
The slack for, I mean, I keep myself obviously pretty busy, but not nearly as busy as I wish I, I did with respect to my kids. And school and stuff like that.
Right.
You know, so.
She's only watching over the Chagrin kit, so you better find somebody in the Kinston.
We are thankful to the use of.
Takes a village.
Yeah. Um, I'd like to kind of think that the, the, the essay contest was my little like compensate, like, like that's how I overcompensated for. Not doing enough for the schools.
So if I, if I was in high school when that essay contest came, I would have totally submitted.
Nice. And what would you have solved?
Oh, gosh. Back when I was in high school?
Yeah, I'm sure they're the same problems.
Probably, so we had terrible food. And the only restaurant near my high school was a McDonald's. So probably would have been something around the.
Oh, that's an interesting one.
Yeah.
Although Michelle Obama kind of handled that, didn't she?
We have much better food, much healthier choices.
Yes. Do you still have the Bosco sticks though?
You know what? I'm not totally sure, but I think maybe not. Yeah. I don't eat in the school cafeteria. I do feel like I live there sometimes.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Um, let's circle back to that in a second. Let's, uh, uh, on the, um, on the school board.
Yeah.
Um, so same question, right? What, what?
What the hell Catherine?
Walk us through the day when you were like, you know, I think I'm gonna run for school board. What, what, what inspired that decision?
Um, well, so. I'll tell you something my husband always says to me kind of jokingly when I'm contemplating a new venture. Says Catherine, you're gonna be doing something. You're not gonna be sitting home doing nothing. So you may as well be doing something that you're passionate about.
Nice.
So obviously, I care about this community, the broad community and, and connectivity. And bringing people together. And I think that there's probably no better place to do that than on school board.
Yeah.
You know, we have all these different communities. I care about these kids and. And I think for me, you know, when I ran for school board, I was starting to see a rift developing. That's kind of always been a little bit there, a little bit of an undercurrent and, um, and I wanted to help bring everybody back together. Just kind of the communities of our school district. We're starting to be like, we're South Russell and we're Chagrin. And it's funny, I just went to the Orange and Black Review.
Yes.
And one of the, um, skits that the MCs did involved, they were doing like a fake bachelor and it involved, um, oh, well, you're from Bainbridge, you're from four, four, oh, two, three.
That's funny.
And I just, I was cracking up. And I, I think maybe I share this with you, that it's, the Chagrin Valley is my home. And, and it's, it's all of these communities being connected together and we certainly are connected by the school district. And, and bringing some focus back to that, I thought was important.
What do you think the most pressing school board type of issues are? What do you think the most pressing issues that the students in Chagrin Falls, uh, are, are dealing with right now that you're playing some role in?
Well, that's kind of a, that question could go a lot of different directions. So, um, I think our students are dealing with an incredible amount of stress and pressure. And, um, there's, it's kind of the way things have evolved with education and really just basically in our country. There are so many different options up to us, um, available to us, different things you can study, different things you can get involved. I mean, the number of clubs, the number of activities, the number of AP classes that you can take.
Let me interrupt, do you think, do you think it's more today, like th- there, there's more choices causing more stress today than there were when we were younger?
Well, yeah, yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think I had four AP classes maybe when I was in high school. Um, and there's like twenty-something, I should probably know the number, but there's a lot of AP. So it's managing.
Requirements from the colleges I think are way more than they were on us, that you have to be involved in so many things.
There's a feeling of that for sure. And then the uncertainty of what are they actually looking at? Do they care about your grades? Do they care about how many years you did theater or whatever? So, so I think that stress is a really big thing and fi- helping our students to, um, navigate that. Now that is a different answer than what I would say is the board's most pressing issue. Because one of the things that, um, is hard for people to understand is exactly what the school board does and what the administration does. And school boards really govern through policy. Rather than manage day-to-day operations or administrative issues. So, um, and it's, it's fine. I mean, I didn't really understand it all until I was on school board. But we're trying to take that kind of higher level perspective on setting some guiding principles and policies on, on what we're trying to accomplish. There's certainly some strategic vision and things like that in there. Um, how we are going to accomplish them and kind of the expectations. And then you wanna hire really, really good administrators, which we have, and we have a brand new treasurer, which is so exciting. Ashley Bredno will be starting on June third, um, and of course we have Bob Hunt. So really strong administrators who could help take those guiding principles and then implement them. And they're the ones making the decisions on a day-to-day basis about how best to implement. So the stress could lead to, do we need more support for mental health? Do we need, um, well, that would be a Bob Hunt decision to figure out what is the best way to help our students with managing stress and mental health, you know, support.
And then would come to you, the school board for approval and how do we implement this and, and create policies to go forward?
Kind of, we, so we would approve if there was a new position involved, we would approve that. I think generally he's very, um, good about giving us what he calls a long runway on, um, any change that's being thought of or an issue that's, that he's looking to address. Here's kind of something we've identified, here's how it fits into our strategic plan, which is always very important. Here's what we think will help us address the problem. And then certainly if there's any funds that are going to be needed, that's the kind of thing the school board would get a little bit more involved with. But there's a lot of trust and autonomy to allow the administration to implement what they think is going to be the best way to address the problem.
So, so what do you think the most pressing issue that the board is dealing with right now is?
It's, um, one that's been around for a very, very long time.
Parking.
Which is, don't you go there, we already did jaywalking, we're not going into parking now, um.
That's for when she runs for, uh, village council. We'll have her back.
That's my last question for sure.
We'll have her back when she's village council president. Go ahead.
Um, the funding of our schools, of our local schools. And, and you all know that, um, Chagrin gets less than a thousand dollars per student in state funding. And so really the vast majority of funding comes from our community. We have been very, very fortunate. We have passed ninety percent of our levies in the last thirty years. We have a very supportive community and I think that's, you know, not by accident. You know, we do a really good job of letting our community know that we need to come back to you. We're going to have to come back to you for funds because of House Bill nine twenty. The funds that you approved four or five years ago are stagnant and obviously expenses continue to rise and so we have to keep coming back. But that said, there's a huge responsibility that I think falls on the entire district. But this is where the board I think feels it the most is managing the expenses. Making sure that we are holding true to our promises to the community about how long before the next levy, what we're doing with those funds, that we're being fiscally responsible, looking for cost savings wherever we can. And, um, being very thoughtful. In fact, one of the things I said when I first ran for school board was, I would spend your money like I would spend my money. I mean, that's how I look at this. You know, we need to be looking at every.
And it is your money.
It is my money, right? It's everybody's money.
Yeah.
But you know, every decision needs to be looked at, like, is that a good decision? And I also have an MBA in finance, so I feel like I have some experience and knowledge to bring. I have, I'm, I'm fortunate enough that I don't have a full-time job, so I, and I, I have the passion to do this and I, I can devote some time.
He's not getting paid for it as, as a full-timer.
So, um, and, and yet, so you want to manage the expenses and the budgets and, and make sure you're getting the best return on investment and that everything you do ties back to students and to that strategic plan. That's a really big task, you know, to undertake.
I mean, I, I, the thing of it is too, that, you know, there's probably folks listening to this who are from less affluent communities. And they're, and they're probably thinking like, you know, wow, you guys have that problem too, you know?
Yeah. Are they getting more money per pupil than we are?
Very few districts are getting, so it costs, depending on your district, no. So depending on your district, um, in fact, the average cost to educate a student in the state of Ohio is around twelve thousand dollars. Each student per year, twelve thousand dollars. Intergreens about fifteen thousand. We're in northeast Ohio, just by comparison, Orange is around twenty. So, or maybe twenty-two. So it costs more than a thousand dollars to educate a kid, right? Um, but the way the state doles out the money is with a funding formula that's really complicated, um, that looks at your property values. And then discerns, you know, how much state funding you get. West G gets like twelve hundred per kid, we get about nine eighty-five, so it, it varies. But there's a new funding formula out, the Cut Patterson proposal, which is being considered. And it's starting to look at, um, property taxes and income and also the full cost of educating a student. So a lot of work has gone into this. Um, it's one of the most promising things I think that we've seen in a long time. Um, since the state funding formula was ruled unconstitutional in, I think nineteen ninety-two or some, ninety-seven, ninety-seven. Cause that's the year my daughter was born. So she's twenty-one now. So twenty-one years ago, the state funding formula was ruled unconstitutional. And there's been a lot of work done to try to come up with a substitute. And so this is, I think, very promising. It probably doesn't go the full way, but it's a very, very good step forward in a more balanced effort to, to fund, you know, public education in Ohio.
Um, you mentioned, um, mental health, uh, in, in a completely unrelated context, but I wanna talk about it because, um, it is. Well, we, last week, we, we, with Sherri Hunter, that's all we talked about and it, um, there's so many questions I have about it as it relates to, uh, student mental health. But is that something that is on the board's radar? And how is, how are you seeing it as a, as a problem, as salute, as, as, as something that you could solve? May, is it a funding issue? We talked about it with Bob Hunt when he was here too. I mean, how, how, how are you guys on the board talking about student mental health?
So actually, on Wednesday, um, we're going to be, um, approving new positions in the district. Um, you know, once a year, we look at staffing and what's needed. Um, and there, there will be a mental health component. Um, I don't, I don't think it's actually gonna be a position that's gonna be coming out of our budget because what we're doing is we're gonna put somebody in place who will help students and families connect with appropriate resources in the county and in the state, um, and also provide some services, I think, in the school. But we're hoping that it will be a net neutral financial decision for us. Because we can find, basically, we're trying to provide connectivity so that students and families know where to go. And we can help identify at-risk students or at-risk behaviors and help direct to the appropriate type of counseling services.
And here's my suggestion for that. Yes, we need what you're saying. But what I think you also need is someone, and this is gonna sound weird, that has really no position other than cruising the halls, hanging out with the kids, a, a Mrs. Ponikvar. A Kathy Cusick I think is working in the, the commissary there.
Right.
Someone who just strictly is eyes and ears, a place for kids to go, that, that builds that rapport with them, has no other responsibility other than, I don't wanna say hanging with the kids, cause then I'm, I, I don't wanna be inappropriate.
Sure.
Just has their ears to the ground.
Right.
Cause those are the people that a child will confide in. It's not gonna be the one who has that, that title because they're afraid. It just has to be that, that person like, like.
So, so let me tell you.
Yeah.
We've, we've got it.
Okay.
In pieces.
Gotcha.
We did put a school resource officer in place. And as you remember, Dasek, Chief Dasek, used to be our school resource officer years ago. And now we have Mike Baldwin that was put into place, um, this year. Mike, of course, has safety responsibilities.
Right.
But he also strolls the halls. He's just there to like, get to know the kids.
Shoot the shit with the kids.
Look for the outliers, you know, make connections with kids and look like they need a friend. So that's one. And then in the middle school, um, they've developed a program where the t- the staff have actually split up the student body. They've taken a list and they each have taken ten or fifteen kids to say, I will make a personal connection with e- every one of these students at least once a week. And so they'll make a point to seek them out and develop the kind of relationship that you're hoping for. You just feel a little more comfortable going to that person.
Cause I just think that what happens is, and it's not the fault of anybody, but we'll take the counselors for instance. That truly is their job or was their job back in the day. They don't e- that isn't even anywhere on their radar now. They are college app, they are guiding the students to, a- and I just think that what happens is to save costs in other ways, you get that one person who is supposed to make these connections, but they have so many other things on their plate or that are put on their plate that they then can't do the one thing that they were there to do, which is just keep an eye on the kids, you know? And it, it's just, and I, I love the idea of starting at the intermediate school because I think if you look at any child who suffers from anything, it's not like they just develop at sophomore year. You know, there are signs in intermediate school, possibly even earlier, that, that you could have seen so that when they are that sophomore and they're on a ledge.
Right.
You know, that could have been.
You know, you remember responsive classroom down at Gurnee. I mean, it, it really is pervasive throughout the district that you're, you not only have staff kind of watching, but you're trying to teach kids that we're responsible for each other. And I forget if it was at intermediate, they started a buddy bench. So if you kind of needed a friend on the playground, you could go sit on the buddy bench and someone would come, it was, it was a sign. And like, hey, I'm asking for a friend and, and I, it's just beautiful.
Yeah, and it makes the child feel safe to ask.
Right.
Cause that's, that's what you need is, is that child who's going through it to feel safe enough to ask for help.
Yeah. I think mental health, um, needs to be, well, it just, I think it needs to be prioritized by every school district everywhere, all the time. And just when you think that you are and that, and that that's enough, I think you gotta go another fifty percent. Um, I agree, uh, to some extent with what you said about how kids are more stressed out these days. Um, but I, 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 and I guess it doesn't really matter why they're more stressed out, other than that they, you know, maybe you can help sort of, um, address the issues. I don't know that, um, it is the school, you, you're, you guys are, are closer to this.
Staying up at night, not sleeping.
I, I think, I think one big difference from the eighties, when we went to school and today, thirty years later, is that, um, there's a lot more stimuli out there, right? When we were in school, there weren't so many options and there weren't so many devices. And so I'll give you one more book reference, right? There's a, I, I think I've talked about this on, on the podcast before. There was this professor, uh, in the fifties named Jeremy Bentham. Do you know Jeremy Bentham? He was the father of so, of modern sociology. And he said that the more ways there are to communicate and the faster that you can communicate ideas, the more society breaks down into factions and teams and, right? And so in the fifties, there was a lot less sort, sort of like social deviance. There were a lot fewer categories of social deviance than there are today. And now all you have to do is Google your socially deviant thing, right? Your idea and you will find a thousand people who are like, yep, right on, I'm, I'm right there with you.
Wasn't it Mad Men that, I don't know if you guys watched that, when the, um, the computer came into their office? And they were like freaking out that like the world was ending and this was the robot that was gonna take. And they would just stand by the window of this humongous IBM computer or machine. It wasn't a computer at that time, um, just like in, in like fear that the, the world was over.
Didn't watch Mad Men.
Oh, so good. You're missing out. Shame on you.
See, my theory is that those categories existed. Those people were there, they just weren't identified.
Yeah.
You know, that we have different ways now of categorizing and identifying and then.
Well, and, but my point, my point is that, um, there are a lot more, um, options for kids in terms of like what drugs to take and, um, ways to, um, obstruct or to, um, bully someone anonymously, things like that, right? And, and so those, all of those different ways are so easily accessible on devices, right? That, that's where stress is generated.
Stress and then, like I said, that them being up all night because they're on their devices, you put those two together. Uh, that is very explosive because you take a tired brain and then a stressed brain. That's, that's a lot. That, and their brains aren't even fully developed yet. They can't even handle all of that.
See, I, that's the thing. I remember stressing out over finals all the time and about college apps all the time.
Never.
I was really stressed out about that.
Never did.
No?
No.
Did you?
Maybe that's why I don't read.
I'm very type A. I, I was, I was valedictorian at my high school, so I was, I was stressed out about it.
I had a lot of boyfriends. That's what I was worried about.
I applied to one college though, you know, like it was a whole different world. And so what you're identifying is that the multitude of options, whether it's social media, you're, is what's getting your attention for your free time? What's getting your attention for your work time? I mean, it's just exploded.
Right.
And that's creates an element of stress in itself, right? Just the choice that you have to make. And my husband says, he's the most routine person. He eats the same thing for breakfast, he eats the same thing for lunch. He has his suits and everything are all lined up and I am not a routine person. If you tell me I have to eat the same thing for breakfast every day, it's gonna drive me crazy. And he says, the reason I do it is because it's one less decision I have to make every day. And it really makes his day go more slowly. Like, why should I stress about what breakfast is? I know what breakfast is gonna be.
It also has to be parenting as well.
Yeah. By the way, Steve Jobs did the exact same thing.
Oh, did he?
That's why you always saw him in blue jeans and a black turtleneck.
Well, my husband has done very well, so I will credit him. It works for him. It doesn't work so much for me. I think I get bored. I want to have variety and I don't wanna have things be too predictable.
But I think the parenting component too, like I think some of the parents stress out the kids. You know, they're throwing some stress on the kid about what college to go to or what they're gonna be when they grow up, those type of things.
Although I will tell you, I've had arguments with my children to take fewer AP classes and they have argued to me.
That they want to.
I wanna do this and it's been very interesting because I've tried to be the parent to take some of that off of them.
And why did you, like, why do they want? Because they're your children basically, cause that's what they've seen you be.
Not, maybe.
Not that I blame you.
They're so smart.
But, no, but. No, but, but you are an overachiever and, and that's a good thing. I say that in a good thing.
I don't know if it's that, though. I think a lot of it is peers, like what they see their friends doing. Um, my daughter wanted to take AP World History, which is now being offered to ninth graders. And I said, I, I don't think this is a good choice for you. You're involved in theater, you have a lot of different activities, you're first year of high school. Let's just get into high school, see how things are going. She was really upset because she felt like I was telling her I didn't think she was smart enough, which was not at all what I was saying. And that her friends would perceive that she didn't make the cut for the class. So, so there's this other thing where we have some, um, prerequisites that the students, this is new since your kids have, um, graduated. Um, for certain classes, you have to meet prerequisites or certain test scores to show that you're, um, set up to do well in that class. And some of the students are interpreting it more as if I meet the qualifications, then I should take that class. And if, if I don't, then people are gonna think I didn't make the qualifications and then I'll be judged for that. So, you know.
So what is the school doing to, to make sure that that is not what is perceived on the, I mean, obviously, if that's an issue, those are simple things.
I do believe it's happening in the communication from the teachers, which is really the most important piece and with the counselors. But I think we could probably do a better job. And it's kind of a double-edged sword with personalized learning. Because there are so many options available to the students and we wanna grow our AP offerings, we wanna grow. Cuz we need variety to address all the different types of learners that we have. But then you don't want the kid to feel like, well, if I, if my school offers twenty APs, then I should take all twenty before I graduate. So it is a difficult thing and it's not just, this is the parenting too. You know, we need parents to be involved in that and, um, helping students learn who they are, how they learn best. What their bandwidth is, given their other interests. You know, we don't want you to not do band or not do theater because you're taking six AP classes.
So.
So some of it's on, it's on all of us, really.
What did your, uh, daughter decide?
Well, that one, I put my foot down. Um, she is taking five APs next year.
Yeah, that's plenty.
And I, I lost that battle. I wanted fewer. But, but she, she had a good reason for all of them and so, I'm hoping she's really involved in theater and choir and, um, she was in Peter Pan with you.
Yeah, she was in Peter Pan with me. When I was in Peter Pan.
Captain Peter, right? No, what you were Pirate Peter.
Just a pirate.
You were just a pirate.
I was just a pirate. I mean, I was the best pirate, let me be honest, but.
So, uh, we're gonna take a, a very short break. Um, and, uh, we will be right back.
Hey folks, Alex Gertsberg here. I am CEO of the Gertsberg Law Firm and Cover My Six. And I hope you're enjoying the show so far. I wanted to take a quick second to tell you about something special we're doing at Cover My Six. If you own or run a business, I want you to go to covermysix.com to see if you qualify for a no-cost business vulnerability assessment. My business lawyers will meet with you in person, go over your customer contract, your employee handbook, and your other key legal documents. And help you spot any legal minefields that they see. We'll also give you some guidance on how to stop those minefields from blowing up your business. So go to covermysix.com to see if you qualify and to sign up. Thanks and enjoy the rest of the show.
Uh, we're back. Uh, Catherine, if you had a magic wand and you could make all of the parents in the Shadrin Falls Village exempted.
Exempted village.
Exempted village, school district. Thank you, Molly.
You're welcome.
Do one thing for five to ten minutes. What would it be?
Have a family conversation.
About what?
I would not dictate that, but I think that one of the most powerful things is that we can do as parents is to allow that time to connect with our kids. And for every family, it's different. Sometimes it's a family dinner, you know, some families, they say taking a drive is a really good way to get your. We do the Sunday night phone calls with my two who are in college. Um, my mom had something that was so special for me. Um, I went through a hard time. I was bullied in, uh, fifth and sixth grade, pretty, pretty severely. The police had to get involved. It was that kind of a thing. Um, but even kind of, I think when she knew things were getting rocky, right when I came home from school, she would make time for me. And I, I knew I had her undivided attention for as long as I needed. And we had a place in the house that we would just go and sit and I knew, like, when I got home, I'd get a snack and I would go there and she would be there. And I could just tell her anything I wanted to tell her. And, and that was so, so valuable to me. And so if I could encourage other parents to take five to ten minutes just to sit on the porch steps or at the dinner table to really listen to what your kids have to say.
Is your mother still with us?
Yes.
Shout out to her.
She does that now with the grandchildren. Whenever one of them is struggling, I'm like, call Grammy. You know, cuz I know sometimes talking to your grandmother is also easier than talking.
Um, whenever I have led organizations of any size, from the army to law departments to this law firm, right? Um, I always try to build consensus, but it's impossible, right? It's just impossible to always get everybody on the same page. And I imagine that when you are you and you've got all these constituencies, among them being parents. When can you recall there being like, sort of just negativity directed towards you while you're trying to do good, right? And while you're trying to be selfless? And then how have you dealt with it?
I was thinking, you know me too well. Um, I am a process-oriented person. And I, I am a consensus builder. And I, I almost think that the process is more important than the outcome mu- much of the time. And establishing a process that's really inclusive and also a lot, allows for some kind of deep dive to get the kind of information, so you come up with the best solutions, really an important factor. And along the way, hopefully, everybody is coming together and in understanding, which I think leads to the answer to your question, which is this communication and transparency and decision-making is just so critical. I can't possibly know what every person in the school district thinks about what we're doing or, you know, not all of them are going to weigh in and there's no way for me to know if there's complete consensus about a direction that we're going. But I think that we can be very transparent in how we're making decisions and what information we're taking into account. And just to that end, we, uh, just at January of this year, we started videotaping our school board meetings. And they are now available on YouTube. And that's with, because we know parents are busy.
Yeah.
And you might not be able to come to a meeting, but you heard about a topic or, you know, you wanna make sure you're well-educated about some things.
I'm gonna get the popcorn on the way home and watch a couple of those.
There you go. I'm sure they're riveting. Um, but we do, we have a lot of information that we get at those meetings and we have really robust discussions about why we're making the decisions that we're making. So, you know, I think it really helps me to know that, first of all, we've gone through that type of a process. Um, sometimes I'm the one slowing things down so that we can do more of that work before we get to a solution, which actually is why I'm gonna run again.
That was my question.
Uh-oh, I'm on you. On top of it.
Again, so there's no term for a board member?
There is. It's a four-year term.
Okay.
So this is my fourth year. So this November, I'll be on the ballot.
So you can re-run?
Oh, there's no term limit.
Term limit, sorry, yeah.
No, in fact, some school boards have thirty-plus school year.
Board and not move over to, to Village?
I love what we started with this board and we have a lot of momentum and ti- change takes time. And I think there are some things that I'm really, we're getting a lot of traction on, and if you want, I'll elaborate. That the next four years will allow to kind of bring forward, you know, even more. The biggest, I'll just say, is capital planning, facility planning. You know, when I first came on the board, um, not unlike many school boards, we had a set budget for facility improvements or facility maintenance. And, um, the department was told, do what you can with this budget. We've really kind of flipped that on its head and said, let's go through this really thorough process of evaluating what the needs are. And let's see what that number is and if we can get to that number. And those are prioritized, vetted in multiple different ways. Um, and what we've learned is we need about four times annually what we had originally been budgeting for the last, you know, ten or fifteen years. So that's a huge process, board governance type, type of thing that we've been working on. We have a board capital planning committee that includes some community members who are really experts in this field, as well as administration and some board members. And we're establishing a methodology for evaluating what needs to happen in the district. Cuz remember, you know, we are probably the biggest portion of public assets that are paid for by taxpayers are in these school buildings. You know, we have a hundred million dollars of assets in, in the school district. So we, to be fiscally responsible, we really need to maintain those and get the most out of those assets that we can. So, um, we're establishing a process for identifying the projects, creating the budgets. How are we gonna make sure we have the appropriate amount of funding in those, for those projects? One of the things we did this year, um, was to move some money from our general fund into our permanent improvement fund by transferring inside mills. So we get a certain number of mills, um, that are none, that not, they're not voted, they're unvoted mills. It's not very much. Um, and usually we just go into the general fund and pay for really anything in the district. And we decided to earmark part of that specifically into capital projects so that we will start to maintain a balance in that account, just like you would. If you knew you needed a new roof in, in five years, you'd probably start squirreling away some money for that roof. We'll multiply that by, you know, four buildings and a, and a stadium. And so we're really making a lot of progress on that and, um, that committee has been in place for a year and a half. And, um, I think the next four years, we're just gonna see a complete change in the way we approach and plan for.
Don't go anywhere. Stay, stay, stick around and then Village Council will wait. There's time. I commend you because, um, I mean, getting back to, to where I was going. Um, there's, it's so, I don't, I don't think people fully appreciate how difficult your role is and how, I, we said this to Nancy Santilli, you know, you've got all of these constituencies. You've got parents, teachers, students, fellow board members, the community, right? And they're all, they all want a piece of Catherine. They all want a piece of the board, you know? They all want their attention to be, and their, and their issue to be addressed.
Very important to them.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And you're ju- it's impossible to make everybody happy, right? Um, the best you can do is articulate, I, I think, right? And I think you're doing this and I think by, by, um, by talking about transparency, you're doing this. But the best that you can do is show your work, right? And then what it, what, what I.
And do the work.
And do the work, right?
So if you can look back and say, I know that we looked at this in depth. I, I looked at it to my comfort level in making this decision, then it's easier.
And that's where that process comes in, right? What, what I would add to that, and I think that you do this too, is, um, I acknowledge that I'm not gonna be able to get it right or every time or make everyone happy all the time. What I, what I do is I articulate the values that I'm trying to stick to, right? Transparency, obviously, being one of them. Um, and saying, look, I'm gonna do the best I can. And these are the things that are important to me and that I think are important to the board and which I think are important to everyone else. And we're going to try to address them to the best of our ability. And the thing of it is, there's always a peanut gallery. There's always somebody in the back who's not willing to run for board, who is not willing to volunteer their time. But who is more than happy to lambaste people, you know, either anonymously or openly on Facebook or whatever, but they're not gonna get into that room. And they're definitely not going to say, hey, here's an idea. Let's talk about it. Let's, and, and, and let's work together. And there's so many of those people. And so whenever we're in the room with people like you, Catherine, who step up and are willing to throw themselves into the line of fire every single day. I just, I'm like, we need, we need a lot more.
Do you, one more question. Do you think the transparency, is, is there too much transparency? Sometimes I see not so much with school board, but with Village Council, I see things that go out on Village Block and I'm like, okay, you are just asking for trouble, asking that question. But is there too, you know, isn't, isn't there just some times where you should just let the board do their job and not, I don't need to know it?
That is such a good question. I, I think that when it comes to elected officials and us making decisions about how we're spending your money and how we're educating your students, you have a right to know how we come to those decisions. Um, there, there are many, um, instances that, that where student privacy is an issue. There are many things that are not, you know, we, we often go into executive session because we need to discuss something that is not in the public realm. But the things that we discuss at board meetings and having an understanding of how we reached a decision and why absolutely is everybody's right to have access to that information.
Binging. When you ask me next week what I'm binging, it's gonna be the school board meetings.
Speaking of binging.
Speaking of.
Let's do the lightning round.
Nice. Catherine, so my first question is, other than the school board on YouTube, what are you binging?
Game of Thrones.
Really?
I just watched it for the third time.
What? Okay, let me ask something.
Every time there's this lapse, I have to go back through all the seasons.
Are there dragons?
Oh, yes.
You know, I, I'm done.
Molly, I think you would love it.
Someone said that you have to get past the first ten minutes, but by the first episode end.
I didn't have to get past it.
You would get sucked in.
What's your favorite show to binge watch?
Uh, I just binge.
What type of shows do you like?
You know what? I don't like to think.
Okay.
So like Schitt's Creek, a comedy is.
I love Schitt's Creek.
I love Schitt's. So like comedies, I loved Mad Men. I'm watching Billions.
Mad Men is like too drama, too much drama for me.
So I'm a drama girl, probably.
Do you like Marvel movies?
No, absolutely not.
I love action and adventure. Um, Die Hard is one of my favorite movies of all time. My kids have seen that movie so many times.
And it's okay.
Yeah, so that could be a piece of it. It's, um, you know, there, it's got all the, you know, the different families and the strategies and, you know, so that part of it is, is really interesting to me. And then you've got the action adventure and.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think I'm gonna stick with watching something else. I'll find something else. I keep wondering if I should, but.
There are plenty of good things to binge watch.
There are. We're watching the eighties right now. The eighties, the decade that changed us or the dec- the decade that made us.
Yeah.
It's very good.
Oh, good.
Very, very good.
Those, those, uh, decade, um, uh, things on Netflix, I feel like I'm, I'm looking at an old family album.
Oh, my gosh, for sure.
Half of that stuff even happened.
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, they were doing the Rubik's Cube and I didn't realize that there was a kid who broke it all apart and noticed that there were four pieces that did not move ever. And then he put it back together and then I think it was like fifteen and then he wrote a book on how to break it and crack it. And, um, he went on tours and, and, yeah, the Rubik's Cube. Okay, a, a perfect day.
So I like to start my day with a cup of coffee on my back porch.
Oh, I love that.
I have to force myself.
Catherine, we'll be there.
Anytime, Molly.
Excellent, excellent.
Um, I like to start slow.
Although I'd, I'd rather be on your front porch and maybe I'll head over on Sunday right during blossom.
Yeah, there you go. You're absolutely invited.
She has a blossom house. That's a big deal. That's a big deal.
We did not know that when we bought the house.
Really?
No clue.
Well, that's shame on that realtor.
No clue.
For not mentioning that, yeah.
So I, I like to start slow and I, because I tend to be go-go-go all day long. I like to kind of really start slow in the morning and I like to force myself, spend that fifteen, twenty minutes on the back porch, dog in lap. Just looking at the flowers. The forget-me-nots are blooming. It's just gorgeous. So that is a huge, um, a huge, great way to start the day. And then I usually do a little bit of computer time, just catching up on emails. And is this ideal day or actual day?
If you could have any day.
Okay, well, forget that.
Forget the computer, uh, if you could have.
So then I would go out with friends, for sure. I would get a group of girlfriends to go out to lunch. Um, maybe go someplace new that we'd never been before. I love antiques. Try out some new antique stores. Um, come home, make dinner. I actually do enjoy that with my daughter. Teach her something new. I keep trying to get them to pick a recipe so that when they go off on their own, they've learned some of the family recipes. We always have family dinners together, which is a tradition my husband insisted upon and again, I'm so grateful for because my dad was never home for dinner cuz he was in the air force and usually just commuting at that time. Um, and then probably chilling out. I don't know. I'm pretty simple.
Okay.
Notice my ideal day does not include.
Yes, the computer.
A school board meeting or, you know, being a, being a crossing guard, I think I would put that in there. I, I love, I, I, every day that I go out there and do it, I love it. It's just, it warms your heart and you're so glad you did it. Even though you're like, oh, I'm rushing back from the store to go make my shift, but.
You do it.
Yeah.
I have to tell you, uh, one time when I was.
Uh, I have to tell you, uh, one time when I was driving and, and, um, I rolled down the window and said hello.
Yeah.
And Ethan was in the front seat. He's like, Dad, how do you know a Chagrin Falls crossing guard? I'm like, I know people.
You know, everybody. He hasn't figured that out yet.
Yeah.
My kids automatically like, oh, yeah. They won't even go to the store with me because probably this is like for you. You can't go to Hines for.
To go out of the area to go, I, I go to the Bainbridge area, yes, to shop. I do. And I do that purposely, cause I don't have a lot of time to, you know.
Yeah.
Um, and really the, the other one was if I wasn't a, so if you weren't on school board and a crosswalk person, what would you be? So basically, if you could be anything you wanted to be, what would that be?
Wow. Well, see, I tried, I was in business for a long, I was with a startup company and I really loved it. Um, I did investor relations and strategic planning. But it didn't allow for the balance with family that I love. So I love where I'm at.
Okay.
And I think that I don't need to know what that next thing is gonna be, cause I'll know it when I see it. And I have learned in my 51 years to pause before saying yes and really be thoughtful because you know that song with me, it's all or nothing? It's very true about me. Do you know that song from Damn Yankees?
I do not, but I.
You're gonna have to go look that up.
I'm going to, yes.
Um, if I'm in, I'm all in and it's all my attention and I'm committed. And if I'm not, then I'm not. And, and so I try to be really thoughtful about what my projects are.
Molly, what do you think the over-under is on how long before, um, Catherine runs for Village Council?
Um, well, it'll be four years.
You're saying right after this next term?
Absolutely. And you heard it here.
My kids will be out of school.
I'll agree with that.
You heard it here, folks.
Not from me.
She has no business to be in, on the board, which will have no kids in the district, so.
So my husband might be retiring and then we'll be traveling and who knows?
I mean, I'm saying, you might take a year off.
It depends. If there's, I'm, I'm, if I have trouble if there's a clear need.
Yes.
Not jumping in and trying to help. So hopefully there won't be a catastrophic need and we'll be in a really good place. And I'll feel like they're doing a great job.
God bless you, Catherine.
Keep going.
Uh, Catherine, you are shipwrecked on a desert island for a minimum of three months. Potentially for the rest of your life, you have no idea. You may bring with you any single author's entire bibliography. Who's the author?
Madeleine L'Engle.
Who, I've never heard of.
Do you know her? So it's, it's kind of like, um, middle school age reading, but I love her, her work. So she did A Wrinkle in Time.
Oh, I love A Wrinkle in Time.
A Swiftly Tilting Planet. So that's her. And so it's kind of like this blend of like science fiction and there's some, um, inspirational things in there. Well, you know, Wrinkle in Time.
I loved A Wrinkle in Time.
Right.
Do you know, um, that a few months ago, I went and, um, listened to a talk by Judy Blume?
Oh, great.
Michelle said you didn't invite me. Like, I grew up with her.
And she was being interviewed by the, um, the guy that writes the Limoney Snicket series.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I think I told you about it. Damn it.
My bad. Uh, same, same shipwreck, same desert island, same amount of time. And you may bring with you any single musician's entire discography. Who is the musician?
Cat Stevens.
Oh, I love it. Wild World's my favorite.
Also known as, what's his other name?
Yusef.
Yes, Yusef something, that's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Have you seen Harold and Maude?
Yes.
It's like my favorite movie. It's all his music. No, it's all his music.
I'm gonna have to re, re-watch that.
You have to get that. Yeah, it's, it's like, most people are like, what?
You know, um, I used to sing Cats in the Cradle to my kids to put them to bed and I could never get through the end without crying like a baby, right?
Yes.
And I'm like, oh, I'll start crying right now.
Why don't you rewrite it and do it?
Um, what is the routine or habit that you do on a daily or regular basis that has given you the most mileage?
Well, remember, I hate routine. So I struggle with this.
Trick question.
But I do force myself to do that, that morning coffee.
Is that, is that the?
I also am a gardener and I, my soul is filled when I have time in my garden. So when, when you see me in my garden, don't come talk to me. That is me connecting, working through issues or just zoning out and focusing on.
Mommy Dearest was in her garden for that one scene. She was focusing on some things. Remember that scene on Mommy Dearest?
I've never seen that movie.
Where she just, she cuts the rose, where she just freaks out in her, in her garden, not that. I could just see Catherine like,
No, 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 I'm not working out in the garden.
She's working something out.
It's nurturing and, and watching things grow and live and giving them the sustenance that they need to survive.
That's so cool.
So interestingly enough, I need a gardener because I don't like gardening, but I, but I have a very large, uh, like plots of like, what do they call those box, um.
Are you offering her a job?
They're like boxes.
Raised beds, raised beds.
Yes. Um, yeah, if you know any people that wanna, um, come to Bainbridge and do some gardening, I will pay handsomely.
Well, there's lots of good.
Yeah? Where do I find someone?
Like Lowe's, talk to Jeff Grif.
Oh, he'll, like, he'll have somebody that will come over every week?
He has my front bed.
Really? I know Jeff did that?
He'll come out and give you a console to tell you what plant and do the design for you. They'll come and they'll install everything.
Stop it.
Escape Design, Hemlock is another one that does that. Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know they did that kind of thing.
Absolutely.
And then there's like the maintenance of it though, uh, cause then you gotta do weeding and.
That's your yard crew.
Not necessarily.
Well, they, they won't, will they do any of that?
Tell them you don't wanna do that and he'll make sure he plants what.
Plants things and.
I gotta talk. I didn't know they did that. All right, um.
The Christie?
The Christie is if you could interview any person who ever lived, who would it be?
Thomas Jefferson.
Ooh, good answer. I like that one. Thomas Jefferson.
And what would be like the one main thing that you'd wanna know? If you could only ask him one question. Ooh, we're taking it deep.
I know. You guys are rough.
I know.
I thought I was prepared.
Well, you knew Thomas Jefferson, so there's gotta be, you gotta wanna know something.
Oh, well, I went to UVA.
Okay.
So we are Jefferson adorers at UVA, but I think that, um, at the time that he lived through, and he also, again, hate to keep harping on connecting, bringing people together, you know, putting this country together and putting the policies in place that would kind of help determine where we would go, what our future would be, is, it's really mind-boggling if you think about what, what had to be considered by our founding fathers. So I think it'd be really interesting to hear from him what he thought, what his vision was, how the word choice was so important, which we see now as we're interpreting the constitution, how, you know, what, what were they hoping those words would be interpreted as or were they intentionally brought to allow us to interpret them and um, and he, and he traveled the world, as you know, he was our ambassador to France and, um, he brought back, he was a gardener. He brought back a lot of plants to the US that weren't here before. And he was an engineer, you know, he was an inventor. I could have many, many conversations.
Uh, Molly, I declare this, uh, episode.
Right?
No, I was gonna say officially a success.
And the longest, but it doesn't feel like the longest. Like, I just feel like it just.
Yeah.
Just.
It, it just flew by.
Yeah.
That was awesome. Thank you, Catherine, very much.
Anything coming up that we should know about? Are you doing anything?
Me or the school board or just?
Either.
Ever?
Um, well, you know, we're doing a grand opening for the intermediate school. We didn't talk about that at all.
September 14th, no?
August 17th.
August 17th.
It looks amazing, by the way.
Yeah, I did a tour a while ago.
Okay.
A while ago, uh, the chamber was, Bob was kind enough to do it with our chamber board and it was just spectacular. Just the, just the, the learning that's gonna be able to be done in that building will be great.
It's, it's gonna be the biggest community space in the area, cause the cafeteria alone holds over 300.
Wow.
People. And then if you add the auditorium and the gym.
So excited, so excited. So that's August.
Seventeenth, so it's the Saturday before school opens and it's gonna be big.
Marker counters, folks.
It's gonna be big. Like, the band is gonna be there and I kinda want them to march through town and then.
I love, everyone follow.
Yeah, get in the rocket car.
I love it. I'm right, I'll lead the char, I'll lead the pack. I love it. Great job.
Molly, what are you working on?
Well, my book, which at, at the point that you're listening, you could just simply go to apieceofmollysmind.com and buy it yourself.
Will it be at Fireside?
$12.95 plus tax. Um, that, you know what? Yes, Fireside will have a few of them.
Okay.
But you can always go to apieceofmollysmind so that Molly can get the full profits, not the, you know, yes, yes.
Good.
apieceofmollysmind.com and, um, it's coming.
Those grandbabies ain't gonna clothe themselves. Molly, Molly needs some, uh.
She can knit.
Actually, you can see the grandbabies in the book.
Ooh, awesome. Good stuff, Molly.
Love it.
Yeah, about you?
Uh, you know, just, uh, just the usual, practicing some law, solving some problems.
Oh, can I interrupt again?
Being a dad, yeah.
Uh, I will be at, um, the Blossom Time Glow with my book, um, signing. You can purchase them at the Glow and I will be signing them. It helps that the book is named Blossom.
Right.
And it's about a hot air balloon, so.
Yes.
The J C's are kind enough to have me present there, so.
Awesome.
That is awesome. Nice job, Molly. We're proud of you.
Thank you.
Folks, if you've listened all this way, then you love Catherine Garvey. You probably love Molly as well. You should, at this point, uh, whatever device or app you're listening to the sound of my voice on, there's probably like a subscribe button or a like button or a rate something or other there. So hit it, right? So that you know when these, wh- when these guys come out. And then you can also do that on Facebook and you could like us there. And then you could subscribe at thebestpodcastever.com. And you should, and that way you'll be the first one in the know. You won't have any FOMO at all. You'll be like, oh, there's a new episode. It just dropped. I gotta, I gotta cut out of here. I gotta go listen to my friends.
That's right.
And, uh, see what's happening around town. So thanks for listening. Do that. Thanks for listening and thank you, Catherine. That was awesome.
Thank you, Catherine. So much fun.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
See you next time, folks.
See y'all. Bye.